Good evening and welcome to the April 12, 2022 work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I represent the Riverbend Township and serve as Chairman of the Board. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens, for our television audience. I would like to present your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Charville Township.
Good evening, I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
And thank you. At this time, we will start with Proclamations, Commendations, Awards, and Certificates. The first one will be a presentation of the original lyrics penned by Judge William Gaston in 1835 as the official state song, "The Old North State" to Gaston County, dedicated in memory of Ms. Catherine Hill. We have a really special presentation this evening, standing here, Mr. Hill, if you'll come over, and along with Dr. Eagle and Vice Chairman Hovis, Sergeant Richard Hill, who has worked for the Gaston County Sheriff's Office for more than two decades as a detention officer. Sergeant Hill is providing a unique and very generous gift to Gaston County. What is being presented is the original handwritten copy of the North Carolina state song, "The Old North State." While "The Old North State" wasn't officially adopted as the state song until 1927, the lyrics were written by Judge William Gaston all the way back in 1835. Sergeant Hill came across this document by chance as an online auction in the Washington County, Illinois. Sergeant Hill recognized the lyrics and knew that this was incredibly valuable piece of history that could not be passed up. He is donating it to the county tonight in memory of his wife Catherine, who passed away late last year. We are grateful for his generous donation, and our county manager, Dr. Eagle, and Vice Chairman Hovis are here to accept it on behalf of the county. If you wish to come up and say a few words, Dr. Eagle and Mr. Hill, thank you, and this dedication to your wife is greatly noted, and thank you so much for your service.
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Chairman," and I want to personally thank you, Sergeant Hill. This is a treasured piece of history, and we will prominently display it in the manager's suite in the Gaston County Administration Building, per Sergeant Hill's request. And we not only appreciate your years of service to Gaston County, but your willingness to offer this gift and share the lyrics with us as an original. It's quite an honor, and we cannot thank you enough. And I would like to unveil the document, and then if you would like to make a few comments, you're more than welcome to do so. So, Mr. Hovis will help me.
It's an honor to be here with y'all tonight. It's a little bit of a sad occasion for me. I've not done public speaking probably in twenty-some-odd years, so if I seem nervous, please excuse me. When I did see this document come up for auction, I did recognize the lyrics. I love history, and I had discussed it with my wife, what we would do with this. And she passed before we really had to determine what we would do with it. And I determined it on my own that it belonged in Gaston County, not in Raleigh, but in Gaston County, because it was penned by a very important person with connections to this county. Therefore, it was in my heart that it remained with that, and I'm deeply honored that y'all have accepted it, to remain with y'all and to be on display for those that see it, to really take in the meaning of it and the historical connections to this county. Thank you for allowing me to give it to y'all.
Thank you. Sergeant Hill, thank you again on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the County of Gaston. We appreciate your service, but we also appreciate what you've done to bring this document back here, but also Gaston County will not forget that you dedicated this in memory of your wife. Thank you. Next, I'll call on Vice Chairman Hovis to read a proclamation.
I don't know if we have anybody associated with all the volunteer agencies in Gaston County here tonight. If you do, would like to join me, you're more than welcome to do so. If not, having been a former Volunteer of the Year for Gaston County myself, long before any political aspirations that I had, wanting to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, this is very important to me and very dear to my heart, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the entire community can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, and whereas millions of volunteers working in their communities utilize their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the senior population, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas volunteers are vital to the future as a caring and productive county and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April the 17th through the 23rd of 2022 as Volunteer Week and recognizes this year's theme, "Empathy and Action," as an opportunity to encourage all citizens to volunteer on appointed boards and in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can replace disconnection with understanding and compassion. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners joins the National and State of North Carolina by recognizing all volunteers in the community and especially the members of the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Board, Animal Care and Enforcement Advisory Board, the Caramont Health Gaston Memorial Hospital Board of Directors, the Child Fatality Prevention Team, Community Child Protection Team, and the Council on Economic Development Commission, Emergency Medical Services Committee, the Environmental Review and Advisory Board, the Equalization and Review Board, the Family Advisory Board, the Farmers Market Advisory Board, the Fire Advisory Board, the Fireman's Trust and Relief, the Gaston County Board of Trust, Gaston College Board of Trustees, the Gaston Community Action Board of Trustees, the Gaston County Board of Adjustments, the Gaston County Housing Board, the Gaston County Family Health Services Board, the Health and Human Services Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, the Jury Commission, Juvenile Crime and Forestation Council, the Gaston Board of Trustees for the Library, the Museum of Art and National History, the Nursing Home and Community and Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Partners Behavioral Health Management Partnership for Children of Lincoln and Gaston Counties, Personnel Advisory Board, the Planning Board, the Quality of Natural Resource Committee, Region F Aging Advisory Committee, the Sarah Local Planning Committee, the Transportation Advisory Board, the Tourism Development Advisory Board, and the Workforce Development Board, for all the many services they provide, the Gaston County Commission and the citizens of Gaston County. This is to be adopted at our voting meeting on the 26th of April, 2022. Next, I have a proclamation referencing National County Government Month. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 315 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas counties move America forward by providing public health services, administering justice, keeping communities safe, creating economic opportunities, and much more, and whereas Gaston County and all the counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health and well-being and safety of its residents in efficient and cross-effective ways, and whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties, President Larry Johnson of NACO is demonstrating how counties thrive, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic, and whereas in order to remain healthy, vibrant, and safe, America's counties provide public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, environmental stewardship, and economic services that play a key role in everything from residents' daily commutes to emergency response, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Whereas Gaston County recognizes the 2022 National County Government Month theme as counties thrive, now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims April, 2022, as County Government Month. And Gaston County encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. This is also to be adopted at our voting meeting on April the 26th, 2022. And now, I'm tired of being up here by myself. I would like the folks here in support of our animal control, animal care, and enforcement to please join me here at the podium.
Mr. Hovis, while we're waiting, could we give a round of applause for all the volunteers?
Absolutely.
Without them, we'd shut down.
You know, we, as a county, the seven of us are basically the seven dwarfs, and at the end of the day, all the activity that takes place in all of our appointed agencies happens with you, the people. The people have volunteered their time and have recognized to us they're willing to serve. That is very important. That is how I became involved in government quite a few years ago, back when I had hair and what I had wasn't gray. But that's important that we, as a county, have that connectivity and have that involvement on all individuals. But I'd love to have the opportunity to read this proclamation in reference to Animal Care and Enforcement Appreciation Week. Whereas the care and safety of our community pets and other animals is paramount, and whereas an animal is in need of prompt response of a dedicated animal care and enforcement officer and caring personnel is needed, and whereas the safety of our pets is dependent upon the quality and the professionalism of our animal care and enforcement personnel, and whereas animal care and enforcement personnel are often the first and most critical contact our citizens have with animal care and enforcement services, and whereas animal care and enforcement personnel are a vital link to our community and lost pets, animals in need, or animals presenting a risk to the community, and whereas our animal care and enforcement personnel have contributed substantially to the care, control, and treatment of lost pets and other animals, and whereas our animal care and enforcement personnel have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims April the 10th through the 16th of 2022 as Animal Care and Enforcement Appreciation Week in Gaston County in honor of the diligence and the professionalism of animal care and enforcement personnel here with me today, in honor of the, have demonstrated in the care and custody of our community's pets and many other animals. I would like to present this to our veterinarian who's in charge of the animal care at our facility, and I think she has a few words for us.
Thank you very much, good sir. I just, I want to thank all of the commissioners for the support that you give each of us every day. Our shelter is growing. We have established some really, our positive outcomes for the animals of the community has pretty much skyrocketed, and without each of you and your support that you provide us, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. So, thank you for acknowledging the hard work that all of the staff at the shelter, from the command staff to the kennel workers, provide on a daily basis for our citizens in the community, but also the animals. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do you have room for a small goat?
We have resources for that. I can help you out.
Don't worry, Ronnie, the goat's coming down now. The greatest of all time.
I would like to invite the... Oh, no, that's good. Don't worry about it. This is the right one?
Yes.
Good. Don't worry, the goat doesn't bite. This is to proclaim the week of April 4th through the 10th, 2022, as Public Health Week in Gaston County. Whereas the Gaston County Public Health Workforce is a critical component to our emergency response in natural and man-made disasters and widespread disease outbreaks in our county, including COVID-19, and whereas our county and state public health workers have been courageous, inventive, and tireless in their work to protect our citizens from the threat of COVID-19 during the pandemic. While continuing to perform their other essential public health functions, oftentimes at risk of their own safety and health, whereas the public's health measures to control and eliminate infectious disease, improve environmental sanitation, and promote healthy lifestyle practices have been the greatest cause of improved health status and increased life expectancy for the residents of our county and all of North Carolina's residents. And whereas public health plays a critical role advancing the health and equity and preventing chronic disease and injuries resulting in improved productivity and decreased health care costs in all of North Carolina. And whereas Gaston County Board of Commissioners is committed and continued to emphasis on prevention and public health and to helping our county and others in North Carolina reach a better state of health through actions outlined in the Healthy North Carolina 2030 objectives. And whereas communities, local health departments, employers, hospitals, and healthcare providers, individuals and families, insurers, county leaders, and policymakers, faith-based communities, and schools have childcare facilities must work together to identify and develop innovative solutions to help, to health problems facing the people of Gaston County. And whereas Gaston County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to recognize that public health is working to ensure all the residents and protecting them from threats such as COVID-19, influenza, foodborne disease, injury, and chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, and asthma. Whereas April 4th through the 10th, 2022 would be designated as National Public Health Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners duly hereby recognizes and proclaims the week of April 4th through the 10th, 2022, as Public Health Week in Gaston County and commend its observance and the county residents to convey our deepest gratitude to those in public health professionals who serve in our county every day. This to be adopted on the 26th day of April, 2022. Steve, thank you so much for your staff and everything. Obviously, the past year has been, challenging is a different word to say, but you guys have come through a miracle, and we were very dedicated to what happens here to our citizens, and our board thanks you and your staff and everybody who's employed at the Health and Human Services Department. So, thank you on behalf of that so much.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank each of you for recognizing our public health workforce and recognition of National Public Health Week. I also want to thank each of you and Dr. Eagle for your unwavering support of public health through each wave and phase that we've gone through throughout this pandemic. Undoubtedly, this has been our biggest challenge that we face as public health in our lifetime, the likes of which we haven't seen since the Spanish Flu of 1918. But through it all, this public health team of Gaston County has weathered each spike, each peak, as well as testing and vaccine distribution. Like many other public health institutions, we've had many staff leave when things got tough during the pandemic, but the staff and leaders behind me, as well as the other 170 staff that have remained and have stayed committed, are resilient and have weathered the storm mightily. They haven't flinched, and to each of them, I'm so very proud and humbled. Like everything else we do in public health, we certainly don't do it alone. Through your support, the county manager, the faith community, Caramont, Jims, Contegra, nonprofits, the school system, Belmont Abbey, Gaston College, I could go on and on, so many others, we continue to seek to ensure the best possible outcomes for Gaston County. So, again, thank you all for this very special recognition. We want to thank each and every Gaston County citizen for everything they've done for themselves, for their families, and for their neighbors over these last two years. We certainly couldn't have done it without them. Thank you very much.
This is to proclaim the month of April, 2022, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Gaston County. And at the end of the night, if you would please, as you leave, there's going to be this little thingy dinghy. You want to call that, what's the pinwheel is the actual name. If you'll please take one in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every aspect of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone, and whereas all children have the right to grow up in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, free from abuse and neglect, and whereas children are the key to our community's future success, prosperity and enriched quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also the most vulnerable, and whereas most child abuse cases arise from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged, aware, and supportive community, and whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have long-lasting consequences for its victims, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies are created, nurtured, and implemented through partnerships with the Gaston County Department of Social Services, the Lighthouse Children's Community Advocacy Center, and law enforcement. And whereas the Lighthouse Children's Advocacy Center served 452 child victims of abuse and/or neglect in 2021. Whereas one in 10 children will be the victim of sexual abuse before their 18th birthday, whereas over 90% of perpetrators of child sexual abuse are someone known to the child and/or the family, and whereas pinwheels are the national symbol of child abuse prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of April, 2022, as Child Abuse Prevention Month and calls upon citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected officials, businesses, and to increase the participation in efforts to support families, thereby strengthening the community in which we live. This to be adopted on the 26th day of April, 2022. I would now ask Heather to please come by, say a few words, and please, as you go out, please take a pinwheel, take one or two if you need to, and give them to somebody. And when they ask you what it's for, make sure you tell them what it's for and ask them to give it to someone else so we can stop child abuse as much as possible in Gaston County. So, thank you so much, and please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having us here today. Thank you for the recognition and support of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and all of the ongoing support as we raise our efforts for education and preventative services for the children. We're here today with several of our partners. We also work very closely with a whole multidisciplinary team, and without that entire team, all of the work would not be possible. So, thank you to all the representatives and everybody from social services, social workers, law enforcement, our district attorney's office, mental health providers, medical providers, who all work in this team in collaboration to reduce the trauma and prevent child abuse. Around the community, April, we've got the pinwheels, so April for Child Abuse Prevention Month, pinwheels are our national symbol, and across the community, you will see businesses and yards that have been penned with pinwheel gardens or bouquets. Encourage everybody to kind of give a shout out to anybody who has displayed those and be on the lookout for other opportunities throughout the month of April to show your support. We are going to be having an awareness night at a honey hunters game on April 28th in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Prevention Month. But again, thank you for all of the ongoing support to all of you here as leaders, as well as to our community.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 10th through 16, 2022, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Gaston County, to recognize public safety telecommunications personnel and their crucial role they play in the protection of life and property. So, I'd like for Assistant Chief and Captain Roberts, Captain Hensley to come up, and any telecommunicators that are also here, because you are the ones that do the job every day. You had the night off, but you had to come over here. Whereas emergencies in Gaston County can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services, whereas Gaston County 911 are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of Gaston County law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Gaston County 911. Whereas Gaston County telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics, by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas Gaston County telecommunicators have exhibited... Whereas Gaston County telecommunicators have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. And whereas, the second full week of April has been set aside to recognize public safety telecommunications personnel and their crucial role in the protection of life and property. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaim April six, ten through sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two as Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And this is to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and our citizens safe. And this will be adopted on the twenty-sixth day of April, two thousand and twenty-two. And just to add one thing, several times, and I know we've had some instances that y'all can tell me about, that these telecommunicators are able to provide lifesaving instruction right to the citizens there before EMS, fire, or police can get there. They're able to instruct for CPR or other first aid. So they're able to provide that citizen that extra help. They're on, they're literally on the scene by telephone, so that, that means a lot. But I thank you all for what you do. And I bet whoever's going to accept this, Captain Roberts, appreciate you. Thank you.
To Chairman Brown and to all the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Worley, I greatly appreciate it, Dr. Eagle. I appreciate the acknowledgement of, for telecommunicators. They do an awesome job. I come in every day and I tell them I'm so thankful and proud of what they do. I can tell you, nobody calls 911 when it's a good day. And so we catch people on their worst day. And they, sometimes they have, they're panicking, sometimes they have bad attitudes, but they're always calm, and they talk to our people, and they give that, give them the help that they need. And they do such an amazing job. For that, I would say thank you. And I'm, I'm always a little different, so y'all thank us. I want to let the people in the room know what you're doing for them right now. Adam David Seven to county. Currently at the Commissioners Meeting. At this time, they have done a resolution to thank you for your service. And from me and all the county commissioners and the citizens of Gaston County, we thank you.
Certificates in appreciation for public service. It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards or commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. Allison Whitlow, Animal Care and Enforcement Advisory Board. Adrian Hall, Child Fatality Prevention Team. Yvonne Burton, Equalization and Review Board. Leanne King and Andrew Shrag, Health and Human Services Board. Calvin Stiles, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Muneeb Cola, Transportation Advisory Board. Jane Harris, Workforce Development Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. The next item is citizen recognition, and no one has signed up tonight. Are there any other matters that need to come before the Board at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two brief matters. One is, as you know, or lightly know, the Gaston County School Board has approved the transaction regarding the sale of the Belmont Middle School. I will work to effectuate the documents on the legal side of that starting tomorrow so we can get that done as soon as possible. I know that's of some interest to you, and the Board both has to the timing and to the finality of it. The second matter, I wanted to just put on the radar of you, Mr. Chairman, and the Board relates to the other school-related property, the property adjacent to the Stuart Kramer High School. I've spoken to the economic development folks, and it may be time, and I'll bring information to the Board in the next couple of weeks, but it may be time to look at that site again as a dedicated school site and move on from the economic development part. I wanted to let you all know that that information will be coming to you at some point soon.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there any other persons that have? Commissioner Fraley.
Mr. Chairman, just a personal point of privilege, if I may, I'd like to wish my wife a happy anniversary, thirty-seven years today. Be home soon, honey.
Thirty-seven years. Well, congratulations. What we're going to do, we're going to go ahead and get you out of here, where you can go see her. There are, did you have one, Tom? Just wanted to bring it to, to, someone had brought to our attention earlier today. Never mind, that's what we were talking about when I had my notes up here, was about you, Bill, sorry. So everybody with that, we're good to go. This includes our work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, six p.m. in the Hartleyby Gaston Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, at seven oh four eight six six three one nine six. Save the beavers. Good night, Gaston.